Y'all, who are we meeting for the pledge of the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic in which it stands, one nation under our law, individual liberty and justice for all. And you would bow me for my signing prayer? Amen. Thank you all for coming tonight. We have a few things to go through. And we can start off with by looking at the minutes from the July 17th meeting first. You go ahead and make a motion to accept these minutes.
I'll second.
Very fast. Any discussion? I think I just got these out of there. Oh, yeah. See, I had a chance to look them over to you. You're good?
I'm good.
All right, we have a motion and a second. And all those in favor? And opposed, like sign. All right, motion passes. Thank you all. Now moving on to the minutes from the special meeting we had at the cemetery on August 4th.
I think we got a lot accomplished at that.
Mm-hmm.
At least got kind of a plan.
Yes. You go ahead and make a motion to accept these minutes. All right. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, like sign. Thank you very much. They do pass them out. All right, now looking over the financial statements.
I hand it to you every time.
There you go.
Do you have an extra copy of that financial statement?
Of these financial statements? You don't have one here? It should be right there in front of you.
Oh, I just got the one room. Is that all there?
You have to look through the pages?
Yeah, it should be spaced out.
All right.
Excuse me. You have to pick one up and then go to the next one.
Yeah, then there's this for you to sign as well.
There's two papers. Are they stated?
No.
I'm gonna pass this one out.
I have an afternoon to make it.
Oh, they've already got those.
No, for the middle. Yeah, this part.
I'll sign over here. Eight, two, one, eight. Time's running out. Make sure that... Don't do it too hard.
Here, leave it here.
Yeah. Next sign over here.
So they, uh, got this flood damage fixed and the insurance.
Uh, they're gonna start work tomorrow. I'm gonna let Jim do all the, all the updating on that. But, uh, it's gonna, we're draining right now. Got your water.
Yeah.
You should be reading it.
I know.
But I get to it some every now and then. You go ahead and make a motion to accept these. All right. We got a second. Commissioner Green. Any discussion? No. Kimmy? All those in favor? Motion passes. There's those that pass by and sign. All right. We will move right along now to Commissioner reports. Commissioner Green, you have anything for us?
No, it's running pretty smooth. No complaints or nothing, so.
Okay.
As anyone would.
All right. And Commissioner Scott, I'll go with you to the cemetery.
Uh, we had our special meeting at the cemetery on the 4th of August. And we all looked at the new plot back in the back. And Frederica and Lee Congleton was there to give us some advice since they know the, the procedures that, because we wanted to make sure we had a road where it'd be easy for pallbearers, whatever type of, so we came up with a plan of the road to go basically in a circle around it, cut right through the middle with an access road to the center parts. So since it had already been surveyed, I guess we just need to have the surveyor.
Mark the roads.
Yeah, mark the roads for us. And then Johnny had made a motion, I agree with him, that if we, when we get the roads marked for certain, then start mapping out the plots, that we always sell those plots in four or more until the other cemetery is full. You know, if you only want one or two, it'd be in the other part. So, and Dave was there at Richmond, and he agreed with what we were looking at, so I think that went really well.
Yeah, very good. All right. Commissioner Johnson?
Well, I think, yeah, Kimmy can tell you more than I can. Well, uh, we'll live in the last. Lift station number one out here, edge of town, 4.1 north. We've got some issues out there. Jordan and I and others had the pleasure of spending most of our Saturday night out there discussing. We've got it backed up and running. It basically, it went to ground and the cabin basically was welded itself together. It's all backed up and running currently. However, there is some issues with some wiring going down to it. And I spoke to Todd about it. We, our electrician that we've had for many, many years has officially retired. I know he said that before. He said it 25 times before, but this time he actually turned his license. So we have to find somebody else to do that network for us. And Todd's reached out to a local persevere, and as of today, he did not hear nothing back.
Still.
There is some issues with the station. Jordan and I and Todd are all aware of it. We can deal with it for a few days, but we don't know that for long too long. So whenever we get some numbers back on that, we'll have to pull a hammer on that and get it under way. And one of the things I asked for several meetings ago, and for the pumps and the, what ran your mail, the 15,000. We started, on part of that, if you remember part of it, was lift station number four at the nursing home, was doing preventative maintenance out there, which is something we're not very good at. Which started out this week. We pulled a pump out there. It's gone on to be resealed. And ironically, it, according to the guy who knew the pump, it's got the original factory seals in it. That pump has never been pulled. And it's been sitting out there for how many years?
Like 12, 13 years.
It's never had nothing done to it. It didn't show fault on the windlass. Not real good with its pump. Everything else in town, from further decent, all right, the plant. I received the permit about Friday to drain the pump. I notified the contractor. He is, he is going to start in the morning. In fact, he just called me. I think they're moving to put it in tonight. So as of tomorrow morning, there will be no access to the plant down here unless you're on foot. Because they will be sitting in the middle of the road and have the road tore up. They're gonna clean it out. All the gravel and everything went in from the July 3rd flood that we had. And they're gonna move it up to the upper end, and we've, while we got it to the back, we have to move it along after a while. But, uh, other than that.
Do you have any estimation of how much time it'll take, you know?
I don't know. I do know that it's the same contractor that done it last time, and they'll basically work around a block. Because they know if it rains again while they're there, it's going to drop.
Yeah.
And what's something we still need to take a hard look at is doing something with that road going in, a two-inch rain, we're going to be doing this again.
Mitigation, yeah.
That road, you all may not even be aware of it. Todd is, but Jordan is. That road was washed out probably a half a dozen times in the last few months. I'm just able to keep scraping up gravel, hauling in gravel, getting it where we drive over again. We've gotta fix that road. We've gotta get that elevation back to what we had pre-July 13th, 2015, when the big flood took about three feet of elevation road out. We, basically, it took three feet out up here, and we built the road back down here, and we've not done nothing with it since. So it's pretty clear if anyone will do nothing. It's been that long. We've changed presidents. We've done everything. I don't think that everyone will do anything. So I think it's time we start looking at doing it ourselves. Whether.
Look at my luck, yeah.
A cheaper type rock. I mean, because what they were gonna make us do is the most expensive way in the world to do it. We could get by a whole lot cheaper than what they're asking us. I think it's something we need to look into. As far as the bridge down there, the bridge is sinking more every day when we go across it. And I guess that's, we're moving to the bridge after the road, the way I understand it.
Mm-hmm.
Because there's gonna be, if the bridge survives, the road maintenance is gonna go on, then we're gonna move the bridge. If it doesn't survive, we'll move to it when we have to. And that could be tomorrow.
All right. Kimmy?
Other than that, we're filling the blinds.
Thank you, Jim. Do y'all have any questions for us?
No, I don't guess there's any questions about it, but.
All right, John?
Uh, I took a look at what Jordan was talking about around the courthouse. You got the pictures?
I did.
All right. And you can tell that some of these could probably get fixed pretty easily.
That's what we want it to look like, is that last one.
Yeah.
Yeah, I seen pictures of what it did.
They were good. Yeah, they were perfect.
So I think we should try to get somebody to go through and get it like that before the apple festival.
Well, I don't think what I was hoping to do that.
Yeah.
And I reached out to a few different concrete guys, and none of them could get the work done that fast.
Well, I mean, in that case, then we wouldn't wanna start on it until.
But we could have, we could get it done this year.
Yeah.
Well, there's some too much air.
Yeah, pass those pictures there.
Well, if you can see here, this is rock.
Yeah.
So it's basically creek rock. You can kinda see it more in this picture. And it's just like chipped away over the time and sunk in. And we want it to look like this right here.
Yeah.
Now, it's got the edge, so, but this is what it looks like in some of the other areas. And we wanna fix that. And it'd be really nice for like, when we have an apple festival next year or whenever.
You were talking about the new curbs?
Yeah. You can look at the pictures if you ain't get a good look at them. Just put them all back in order.
Uh, what we can do on this is advertise for bid. That we have this project. We'll put something in the paper. Maybe some other concrete guys will see this. And, uh, you know, the specs wise, I think we need to have a standard set of specs. So before we, before we do put it out for bid, John, maybe we could measure it. We could measure it.
Six, six-foot curve or sixteen-foot curve?
Six inches, yeah. I think that's what that is there in front of Unis.
I just, look like, like, just, you know, a standard curve in concrete.
So it should be pretty easy.
Yeah. That excavation of, their preparation wasn't to be expected.
That's gonna be the expense. Yeah.
Listen, are we required to take this go this far, um, require, uh, improve in it? I know we take care of our graves and everything around during the snow time, but are we required to take that much and do that much work?
We aren't required, but it's kind of our duty to take care of our citizens.
Cause that, most of it, you know, that's county, or that's where they're.
No, what we're looking at is in the city part here.
Oh, you ain't going in the city part of it. You're just on the other side.
We're gonna be on the city.
Other side, okay.
We'll be on the city part.
Okay.
Like, like there in front of Unis Blacks.
Okay.
That's where, we did that years ago.
Taking the both sides or not there?
No, just on this, just on the, on the left side, yeah. Or the right side, whichever way you look at it. But it's on the city side.
Yeah, okay.
The biggest thing is it's a stormwater issue.
Yeah. Because we wanna wrap that, to go into those.
There's a lot of relation on stormwater.
Yeah. And hopefully a contractor would get, would recognize that and.
Well, I almost got hurt in a big, or sanding. I almost regret it, what it's supposed to be.
Go that way.
Right now.
Have you seen the pictures too? I mean, you know what it looks like, but.
If it was looking like it was, I mean, I think you're gonna need all your stormwater, because it goes from there, I think it goes in that ditch across from Kimmy's house.
Yeah. Yes, it does, right up here.
And from the front of the hothouse, it goes down West Street. Now, mine goes down to the corner of Spring West, and then it goes down parallel to West Street, and then the road kind of dips down.
Oh, yeah.
At the end of Moss and Avenue, there's a storm drain.
Yeah, it's right there by it, in its finished place.
Right.
Well, so you guys wanna do that, get bids on it?
Yeah.
For the next meeting?
I go ahead and make that motion and get the bids.
All right. Advertise for bids?
I'll second.
All right.
On our money wise, what we, have we got enough money in the room?
We don't have the bid yet, so we don't have.
Okay.
Yeah, that's true.
We ain't got a whole lot right now.
No? But we need to, we need to know how much money we have.
Yeah.
I mean, how much the bid is before we, before we even do the work.
Okay.
Cause it may be under.
Yeah.
All right, moving right along.
Can I add something to John's story?
Yeah.
On sidewalks and streets, I'm probably gonna be real popular as soon as I can get to it. I was planning on having it done this week, and I think it did. Y'all brought them here, but, uh, all these trees are hanging out over. And I'm sorry, there are some awful expensive green trees and bushes that's hanging out on the sidewalks and streets. They're gonna get cut.
Okay.
And I hope y'all can draw a sniper card. It's gonna be coming.
We're not gonna be under it.
They're gonna, they're coming out.
Well, me.
We've got some sidewalks that you can't walk on. You gotta walk around on that.
And I feel like the people that are in those areas, the sidewalk is outside their property, should've taken care of that and kept them from.
There's several areas around your house.
Yes.
And, uh, you know, maybe we could coordinate that, that the commissioner over the streets and sidewalks is with you to help.
I think that's, I can see it. A great nap, yeah.
Yeah, it is.
It'd probably help you out a little bit.
I used to cut them in front of Rand's there, all them, and up Bobby Tru's, where he's everywhere.
We get them, uh, when you look at parking. Parking on the, street parking.
On the sidewalks.
Sidewalk parking.
Yes.
Sidewalk parking is getting out of hand.
And thank you for bringing that up, Jim, because I almost forgot. There, there is a place, uh, gosh, I don't remember the address. It is behind the Maritron Station. There's a tractor and trailer that, that parks there on the weekends. We have a piece of a sidewalk that goes across that driveway. And he has caused one of the pieces of sidewalk, well, actually two, because now it goes up like this. So there's a lip. When I got the call about it, I called the gentleman who owns the property, and he has still not called me back. And I'm sure that he knows what I want. What I would like to see done, and Jim and I have talked about this, is to take that sidewalk off their driveway. And, you know, we're, we're not in the rental business. We're not in the landlord business. And what these landlords do and who they rent to is out of our control. But driving across that sidewalk with that, uh, great big semi tractor is not good for the sidewalk at all, but the guy's got nowhere else to park it. And Jim and I talked about just going in there with the, with the, uh, the forks on the tractor and just taking it out, putting some gravel back down in the empty hole, and get that sidewalk off there. We've got a cone sitting on there. It's by the handrails. And, uh, Jim, we can take care of that in an afternoon, couldn't we?
Yeah, it won't be no problem. One thing I would ask, and I have no idea, are we gonna be violating any handicap things by?
By taking out that sidewalk?
By taking out that piece if somebody's coming down through there in a wheelchair and.
But you get all over there, right?
I mean, I don't know if it's even an issue, but I think, that's the thing we ought to ask before we just take it out.
Yeah. Yeah. And it should've really never been there to start with. Because it poured over a driveway. All right, Jim, I'll look that up before we start to work and see where we go on that.
Yeah, as far as your movement, putting on gravel down, we can do that basically, not no cost, but very little cost to the city to do that.
Right.
If we can do it.
Yes. And I'm sure we'd have to coordinate with the State Department, since we're right there on the state right of way.
Yeah, on right of way.
Yeah. And they may actually know what that law is.
And there might not be any law on it.
Right. It's best to, it's best to look into it, yeah. Best to look into it first. All right. We will move right into the second reading of the ordinance to amend, uh, the regulation of alcoholic beverages in the city limits of Bedford. I'll let Joanne have the quote.
Sure. So the, the point was that we wanted them to be able to do external advertising. So I'm just gonna read the amended one, which means I'm gonna leave out all the things that we're gonna take out. City of Bedford, Kentucky, what is the ordinance number?
It is number six.
Okay. Series 2018, an amendment to ordinance number one, series 2017, relating to the regulation of alcoholic beverages in the city of Bedford, Kentucky. Display a printed warning, advertising, and other signage. All signage shall be in compliance with any and all other existing rules, regulations, and ordinances of the city of Bedford. B, no flash and light shall be used to illuminate the exterior of any premises licensed under this ordinance. C, any advertising by any licensee under this chapter shall be in compliance with KRS 244.130 and regulations promulgated thereunder. D, no licensee shall publish or display advertising that is falsely misleading, nor shall any licensee publish or display advertising that implies that consumption of alcoholic beverages is fashionable or the accepted course of behavior, or advertising that contains any statement, picture, or illustration implying that the consumption of alcoholic beverages enhances athletic prowess, whether or not any known athlete is depicted or referred to, nor shall any licensee publish or display advertising that encourages intoxication by referring to the intoxicating effects of alcohol, or the use of terms such as high test, high proof, or extra strong, or depicting activities that tend to encourage excessive consumption. E, then becomes licensee may erect one banner that displays a particular brand, brand of alcoholic beverage on the outside of the building or the property. F, any off-premises signage advertising the sale of alcoholic beverages. A little bit.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, off-premises, that's right. Off-premises, so they can do it on their premises, is prohibited. Okay, G. Signage which refers directly or. Signage which refers directly or indirectly to alcoholic beverages will be limited to two signs that may be displayed from the inside of the window or, or interior of the business. Additional signs, banners, posters, or other type of advertising which refers either directly or indirectly to alcoholic beverages may be displayed on or may be visible from the exterior of any premises licensed for the sale of alcoholic beverages. And then we go to H. It shall be unlawful for a licensee under this chapter to distribute or cause to be distributed any handbills, circulars, or cards as a medium of advertising alcoholic beverages. Um, then number two. The alcoholic beverage control ordinance may be waived, altered, or suspended only by a change of ordinance. And, uh, number three, this ordinance shall become effective, actually, this amended ordinance shall become effective after two readings of publication requirements have been met. And the thing that the first reading was, I wanna say July seventeenth. Yeah.
It, it was July seventeenth.
Okay. And then today is the second.
All right, do we have any discussion about that? I, I can just tell you, this comes from, uh, a couple of the businesses in town have, have requested to have more than one sign out. And, uh, one of the businesses, which is right in the center of town, uh, said he, he felt like people didn't even know because he's only got that one little sign. So that, that's how this amendment come about. Uh, let them advertise, and I think two is not gonna be so bad. All right, do I have a motion to accept it?
I'll make that motion.
All right, second, all right. And this is a voice vote thing?
Oops, yes.
Tammy?
Uh, I'm for.
John?
For Harold.
Yes.
Newt? And motion passes, all right? Thank you all very much. All right, let's move right along to, uh, introduction of Debbie Cole. Debbie has been working on the cemetery maps for us, and she has them laid out over here, and, uh, I think it might be better if we get up and look.
Cause some of these are really, really old.
So these are in sections?
Yes, you have a section. Uh, that's if you're standing out in the road facing the cemetery, that's on your left hand side on the road, that road side. That's where it starts.
This first one is?
Yeah, that's a section. In any open spaces, you see those will be empty cemetery plots. Now, either some of them might be in them and they're just not marked, or, um, there are some that people have bought enough for family and stuff, but.
But there are pictures too right there.
Yes, there's a picture of every, every cemetery plot, every headstone, there's a picture. And if I can't read it, I've gone on there, cannot read. So we won't have a name on it because we can't tell who it is.
Tammy, didn't you say that with someone that we moved it clean though? You can keep it, quit having clean?
Uh, uh, him and I talked about it that day when I was in here. Uh, there's, no, there's an article about a guy who goes through cemeteries and all those, and he couldn't spot the stuff. And he was just using water and a little stirrer.
I know who David I was talking to, David Burtrick.
Just a little Ryan of.
They do, the historical.
Oh, they will?
We have, where we have Debbie, is it close to five thousand?
Left coming in, right going out.
Oh, okay. What, do it?
It's, it's close to five thousand graves.
Oh, yeah, I've a bit of it, yeah. And you'll have a picture of every single one of them will be in file.
Yeah, right.
Uh, as into row one, section eight, row one, you can pull the file folder out and it'll have everybody's grave site picture in there.
Where are you keeping all the files?
Uh, right now, I've got a lot of them at home. So I'm gonna bring them in because I have to have her print pictures on them and I just put them right on all the pictures. What, the picture will tell you what section and plot it's in, or what plot number it is. Been a lot of labor, work and writing.
Very time consuming.
I'll have somebody else in there.
Yeah, I'll bury it.
Does this help in Jennifer?
Yes.
And then she's got, and she'll have the, when it's completely done, she'll have the little, what I call the dipstick.
And then with that.
She'll have this.
To find the grave dot com, I can do that at my downtime. Uh, that way if people are gonna look on Find the Graves, they'll be there.
But they'll all be on this, and she'll have two copies of it. And then she, plus she'll have them downloaded in the computer.
Yeah, I think this is, uh, the bottom of A, this is the top of A. I've tried to put them in order, sorry. I was rolling up.
Okay, what, I hit, take a picture.
Right there.
I don't know if you've seen those, but here's some of the pictures. Here's some pictures of the headstones. And there's one over there that's completely broken, and, and the whole front side of it's broke off.
Is it up in A?
It's over in C. It'll be all the, all the way over at C next to the church.
On A too, that's was falling off and stands up against the, the base.
Yeah, there's a couple of them in each row that's like that. They're either, they're either caught sideways or.
Yeah, very old.
And you almost don't wanna touch them because it could make it worse.
Right.
C or B section seems to be the one with the most unreadable headstones.
That's probably the oldest part.
Yeah, yeah. And now B is broken into two sections, section one and two, because the road divides down the center. So that front part's all one section here and the back part's all one section.
And we should wait on the road markers.
Yeah.
While they haven't come in yet?
I talked to them a few weeks ago and they said they're working on it.
And I think if you just have some little sign on each section saying this is section A, section B, section C, and D, and F.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, EF.
Yes.
About there, about the two sections, and then B, E.
So about how much more have we got left to?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to close it out as quickly as I can. I'm on the downhill side now, so, yeah. I'm hoping by the end of, uh, August first, we can September as well. D, I'm gonna have to leave with the grave chasers over there because I've walked over there twice and I'm kinda confused as to where they're going with these roads.
Yeah.
Cause what I think is a road.
That's back into the Zeeboer.
Right, and I step over and I was counting for the road markers. It was like, what I thought, so there's two rows, one of them's in the middle, so. I wanna get with them and kinda see where they're going with that because if I do something wrong, it's gonna mess up the whole top row.
And they aren't also.
Yeah, yeah. That, that one intentionally should have, uh, you know, if you're standing here looking at it, it's running this way.
Right.
Should've been cut straight down the middle, and then this is section, and this is section. But, uh, now that's neither here nor there, no, but, uh, the roads are gonna be extremely long in those and, like I said.
And it rolls, it's not.
Right, but the, the thing that's got me is when I'm standing there thinking I've got, okay, here's, here's six and here's seven, I'm gonna write it right in the center. Yeah.
Well, it looks good. Lot of work.
Uh, now we're gonna talk about street closures. Street closure for the Apple Festival that's coming up. And, uh, uh, they are requesting that we close off West Street from Church Street to Spring Avenue, and then Church Street to US Highway forty-two and forty-one, and then Spring Avenue from West Street to US Highway forty-two and four twenty-one.
That's what it's always set up for.
It is.
So it's the Church Street to US forty-two?
Forty-two and four twenty-one. Yep, yeah, our usual, usual street closures. Everybody locate that?
Yeah.
All right, do we have a motion for that?
I'll make that motion.
All right, thank you, John, thank you, Tammy.
Would you wanna include the hours you were gonna have them?
And, yes, thank you. Uh, that will be Friday evening, uh, probably around five PM, uh, until Sunday around five PM. And hope to see you all out, hope we have good weather.
I'll be driving.
Even better.
Well, not on those streets.
Yeah, not, not that area. All right, uh, now we're gonna have the second reading of the rental licensing ordinance. Uh, this is the ordinance, we had the first reading last month. It is outlining, uh, some, uh, some guidelines for landlords to go by when they decide to be in the rental business in, in the city limits of Bedford.
Um, and if, so now I've got, this one was six, do I also?
Oh, that one, that one I meant to be six, that one was seven.
Okay, great.
Thank you for catching me.
Yeah, that's all right. So, City of Bedford, Kentucky, ordinance number seven, series twenty eighteen. What I did, um, is write the summary up because you can read it as a whole thing, and if you remember, it was kinda long last time. So I'll, uh, after I, I'll type this up and then I'll mail it to you. So this is the summary, registration and rental license program. This ordinance establishes a rental licensing program, uh, for the means of improving the quality of rental properties in Bedford, Kentucky. The ordinance defines the terms used in it. It sets forth to whom it applies, which is owner occupied rental units, including rental units managed by government agencies. The ordinance states that no one can rent up, out a property in Bedford without first obtaining a rental license as set out in the ordinance. Rental licenses must be obtained within three months of a property being converted to include a rental unit. Applications are yearly, shall be made on the forms provided by the city. There will be a fee of twenty-five dollars per rental unit for the license, and fees must be re, re, and license must be renewed yearly, and fees paid yearly. A new purchase of a rental unit requires a license within ninety days of the purchase. If the city determines any rental unit fails to meet the licensing standards or conditions, a non-compliance notice shall be mailed to the owner and conspicuously posted on the unit. The owner shall have thirty days to comply. If the deficiencies are not correct, then the rental license will be revoked and the occupants ordered to vacate. Notice shall be mailed to the owner, and the ordinance sets out the specifics of what the notice must include. It will include a date, time, and place for a hearing in front of the code enforcement board. The ordinance gives the code enforcement board authority to conduct these hearings and make a final decision. An additional fee of forty dollars is required with any application of reinstatement of the rental license after revocation. A violation shall, shall incur a fine of between one hundred and five hundred dollars. And the city shall also have the right to seek civil injunctive relief against anyone who rents a unit without a valid rental license, which means that we could ask them to leave the property, or order them to, I guess. This, the code enforcement officer shall conduct a yearly review of the program and submit an annual report to the Bedford City Commission. Health and safety threats can be cited in addition to, in addition to violation in the citation for not having a rental license for a property. This summary is made pursuant to the authority of KRS eighty-three eight point oh six oh subdivision nine. The ordinance becomes effective upon the final reading and publication. The full text of the ordinance is on file with the Office of the Bedford City Clerk, where it may be inspected. Uh, it was introduced and read, uh, what did we say, seven seventeen? And publicly read the second time today, eight twenty-one.
All right, do y'all have any questions about it?
Have we got any, uh, we haven't posted it yet, right?
And, and I believe, uh, there's a thing in there that says ninety days after, after the publication, just like the vacant property ordinance. And, uh, well, let's finish this one first. This is another voice vote thing, but I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
All right.
I'll second.
Thank you all. And, uh, Tammy?
Yeah.
John? Harold? Newt? And motion passes. All right, thank you very much. On the, even on the vacant property, uh, ordinance, we, we have not been getting the registrations that I thought we would. Uh, so beginning, uh, next week, we're gonna send out letters, uh, to people that we know own certain vacant properties, and, uh, maybe we'll get some registered. Get them all registered, that's what we want. And, uh, maybe they'll put somebody in there, I don't know. That's the goal.
So next week.
All right, uh, the Citizen Appreciation Day and the Halloween party. Uh, I have communicated with Poppies. They are good to go for that day. And, uh, I've communicated with the library. They are gonna do some things too on that day so that we have a, you know, our full blown thing with the hayrides and whatnot. Uh, I'm sure we'll enlist the help of, uh, uh, one of our former commissioners, unless Jim wants to drive the tractor.
What day is my birthday?
August, October twenty-seventh.
They bought me a banner.
Yes.
Uh, remember they got their field check last year, period?
Yes.
Talked?
Yes, absolutely. Right, absolutely will. Local businesses would like to participate. And, uh, those, those are the two that I've got so far is the library, Poppies.
What about hometown?
And, and I will talk. Yeah, I will talk to Donna out there too, because I'm sure they are gonna wanna participate. Uh, it's a nice big town party. All right, uh, the next item, guys, is it is time to renew, uh, CDs at the Bedford Owner Deposit Bank. I didn't write down the amounts. Uh, yeah, if you could. The one for the cemetery CD, uh, both those are, I wish I wrote those amounts. They were, I think they were eighteen month CDs, maybe they were twelve months?
Twelve months.
Yeah. Uh, which one is the cemetery?
It's it.
It is this one, and it is in the amount of eighteen thousand sixteen dollars and ninety cents. And tomorrow is the day on that one. And the other one for the appreciation reserve fund, that's sewer stuff, is seventy-eight thousand one hundred three dollars and two cents.
They won't have an interest rate till tomorrow, I don't know what the interest rate is.
And I guess the big question will be, do we wanna do twelve months again? Uh, or eighteen months? Eighteen months, we get better interest rates.
Is the interest rate higher?
No, not really.
I live.
Not so much.
I know the bank, some of them went up.
Yeah.
Raise on it over there.
Yeah. Yeah, not yet. Uh, so what do y'all wanna do?
We're doing six months.
Eighteen months?
Yeah.
Would you like to make that motion?
We need that sewer. Hopefully we need some of the.
Can you touch that at any time, right?
Yeah, we lose money, you know that, but, but yes, yes.
Let's do it eighteen, then if we can, if it end in emergency, we have to get it.
So we have, is that a motion from you and a second from Tammy? All right, and that's for both of you folks?
Yeah.
And all is in favor? Okay, fantastic, thank you all for passing that. And, uh, now I would, uh, I would like to make a motion, go into executive session, um, to discuss, uh, personnel or litigation that may, uh, come up with the city. Yeah. So we will go in the back room, folks? Do I have a second on that motion?
I'll make it quick.
And all is in favor?
Second, right?
It's gonna take long.